Good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock, so I shall call the meeting to order and ask you to please stand and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Nemeth?
Here.
Vice Chair Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Froggins Sains?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson, absent. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Henderson.
I have a motion.
Second motion.
I have a second. Can we please have a voice vote on the motion to excuse Commissioner Henderson from this meeting?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Froggins Sains?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes with four yes votes. That brings us to item four, the review of our agenda. Ms. Taggart?
Thank you. You did receive a couple of items, one for eight A, a letter from a surrounding property owner or email, and then also on eight D, a letter from the applicant. And there is eight B, which will, the request is that it was continued by the applicant to allow some additional time to figure out what CDFW is going to do with Joshua Trees as it relates to their environmental document.
Okay, and do we need to make a motion to continue that item? Or is it by the fact that it's stated in the agenda already?
Um, let's, so we do have our new-
Staff recommendation is to continue it, so-
It is, when we do have our new attorney on the on the line here, it's Baron Bettenhausen, and he's attending virtually tonight. Baron, can you wait on that one for me, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair, Commission. Pleased to meet you all. The fact that it's written into the agenda is sufficient to continue the matter. Don't need a motion.
Okay, thank you very much.
That was all that had.
All right, thank you. Item five, may I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Froggins Sains and a second from Commissioner Avery. May we please have a roll call vote?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Froggins Sains?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Henderson absent. Item six on our agenda is public comments for any item that is not on our agenda or on our consent calendar. This evening, our consent calendar consists of approving our minutes from last month's meeting. So if anybody is here to speak on anything of those two categories, please come forward and state your name. All right, seeing nobody, we shall move on. May I please get a motion to approve our consent calendar?
So moved.
My second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Froggins Sains and a second from Commissioner Smith. May I please get a roll call vote?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Froggins Sains?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Henderson absent. That will bring us to our public hearing section, item eight A.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Before you this evening is a request from DEC Development to construct a hotel, which is an allowable use within the regional commercial general plan land use designation and C4 commercial center zone, subject to review and approval of a conditional use permit and site plan review applications. As shown here, the project site is located south of West Avenue 08 and approximately 300 feet west of 10th Street West. The applicant proposes to construct the hotel use, which will include a four-story building, landscaping, and onsite parking. The proposed extended stay hotel will contain 122 rooms with 130 parking spaces and landscaping along West Avenue 08. The hotel is expected to employ between eight and 10 full-time employees, and access to the hotel will be provided through two existing driveways located on West Avenue 08, and the internal circulation has been designed to connect to current and future development. The project will include a variety of building materials and textures, as well as an earth tone color palette, which complies with the general plan community design guidelines and are compatible with adjacent buildings, as well as a desert environment. Furthermore, architectural enhancements, such as varying roof lines and building projections, will be included on all sides of the building. The project complies with all development standards for this zone. This project meets the criteria for an infill exemption and is therefore categorically exempt from environmental review. And with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving conditional use permit 22-003 and site plan review 22-005 and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stacknick. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? All right, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If you are here to speak, please come forward and state your name, and you will have three minutes. If you do ask questions during your time to speak, we will write them down and we will do our best to get your questions answered during our discussion time, but we will not have a dialogue while you are standing up at the podium. So I do have a speaker slip here from Roy McKinnon. Welcome, Roy. Yes.
Give me a second.
And we all did receive your letter, so-
Okay, I wanted to confirm that.
Yes.
Thank you. Evening to Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner members. Thank you for allowing me to express our feelings on behalf of Edwards Federal Credit Union. I'm just trying to set this, okay, go. And Ms. Taggart? I'm wondering if the site plan could be put up, because there is something that's come up that I think I should address and make sure this gets read into the record. You have all gotten my emails, so I won't review all those points. I know you can all read. I will tell you that we have contacted, would it be possible to get the site plan up? Is that possible?
Ms. Taggart's working on that.
Oh, okay. I'll speak while that's happening. We've contacted our original developer and contractor, and we will likely contact our legal counsel if needed, as we understood that the reciprocal vehicle parcel access that was just outlined in the site plan would come from the west 10th street, where our multimillion dollar building is, and also from, from the, I'm sorry, from these, from west 10th street and the south side near our trash enclosure, which is the long road down at the bottom of that. What is concerning for us was, we were never under the impression that we would lose parking places for that entrance off of 08, and that's very much a concern to us, because in our development meetings with the city, it was always understood that this access down at the bottom of the site plan, plus access coming through from future development from the south end of our property. As it is, this will create quite a bit of traffic right in and around where our members enter and exit or drive through ATMs. So I wanted to bring that to the commission. I, we don't believe that this building complements the property at all. We believe it looks like a prison. The dark green colors don't complement the landscape of Antelope Valley, nor does it fit the exteriors that we spent millions of dollars developing for our Class A building, and that's what we told the commission we would do, and that's what we did. In fact, we returned over $4 million to the local community by working extra hard to hire local contractors and tradespeople. Fairfield Inn Suites is an excellent complement to our building. It's an upscale. The developers have told me personally that this will actually be a little bit better than Fairfield Inn Suites. I did a little research on them. They are a low-scale, two-star hotel at best. They're a budget place, and I just have to wonder if perhaps it's not a way to provide low-income temporary housing. Additionally, the sign they put up on their property, I just noticed tonight, had an address listed for this meeting of 8,300 Sierra Highway. And having only been here a few times, I Googled the address right before I came, and I realized, wait a minute, that's in, that's in Santa Clarita. That's not the building I go to on Sierra Highway. I wonder, was that intentional that they left the three off of the 3, 3,300? I can see my time's up. If I could just make one or two more points. We have a hotel there already. It's running at about 50 or 60% occupancy. Do we really need another hotel right behind us? The city says they're pro-business. What are you doing to support businesses such as Edwards Federal Credit Union? These hotels do nothing for the local community.
I appreciate your time, Mr. McKinnon.
Thank you very much.
I'll keep it as fair as I can, I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Do we have anybody in Zoom land?
Yes, I do.
I'm glad I remembered.
Yes, hello, my name's Jordan Hamilton with DEC Development, and just wanted to say thank you to the commission for your time and consideration. Also, say thank you to the city staff that has helped us get to this point. Megan and Sarah specifically. Also, thanks to Barry Muntz with Antelope Valley Engineering, who worked on the two adjacent sites and is very familiar with the, with the access easements and how the whole plan works together. So, just wanted to say thank you and here to also answer any other questions that might come up.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Or on Zoom land?
I have one, Galaxy, 10D. Go ahead and speak.
What was the name?
Galaxy.
Galaxy. Okay. All right, Galaxy is shy today. Anybody else here to speak on this item? Yes. Okay, whoever's on the call as Galaxy phone person, it is your time to speak. If you can unmute yourself.
Yeah. Hi.
Hi, what is your name?
My name is Lisa Kraft. And, uh, next Wednesday, June 15th, will be the final say on whether or not the Western Joshua Tree will survive. The meeting is 8:30 a.m. Department of Fish and Game Commission will vote whether or not to protect the Joshua Tree as a endangered species. Please sign this petition. It's called Change, go to change.org. That's change.org. And then go to the little hamburger menu up on top, search for Protect the Joshua Trees. Please sign this petition, so we can show the Department of Fish and Game that we recommend that this be listed as endangered. Okay, so this is next Wednesday. This is the final say. This is the last chance for the Western Joshua Tree. Change.org. And then search for Protect the Joshua Trees exclamation point. Change.org. Protect the Joshua Trees exclamation point. Please sign this petition. I think that this, this, this applies to all of us. Builders or not builders, this applies to all of us. I've already sent this to petition to everybody on the council and also the planning commission. I hope you guys sign this petition. We really need you guys to sign this, okay? Change.org. Protect the Joshua Trees exclamation point. Next Wednesday, the Department of Fish and Game Commission will vote yes or no to list the Western Joshua Tree as being endangered. If they vote no, then the Joshua Tree will have no protection at all, and they'll probably disappear in a couple of decades. Change.org. Protect the Joshua Trees. All you have to do, you don't have, you can share as much as you want, and you don't have to pay anything, okay? It gives you an option to share without paying, okay? So thank you very, very much. I really appreciate everybody signing this petition. Thank you very much, and have a, have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kraft.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
Nobody else at this time.
All right, thank you very much. Then, if there is no objection from the commissioners, we shall close the public hearing on this item. All right, and we will open it up for a motion or discussion.
I have at least one question right now. Is, is anyone in staff have any numbers on what occupancy rates are in the Palmdale, Antelope Valley area for hotels?
I do not, but I know that occupancy is pretty high, since we are missing, you know, sort of a middle area of housing. So I know a lot of our local employment generators are using these hotels to have employees and want us to stay out here during the week. But I don't know what the exact number of occup, or the exact occupancy is.
Because my understanding is they're, they're pretty high. And a lot of it's aerospace.
Correct.
And I mean, I've seen so many hotels going up so fast over the last 10 or 15 years, mostly in Palmdale. And it seems that they can't keep up. So, um, and I really feel for Mr. McKinnon, all the stuff you guys have done. I don't know if there's any, calling it a two-star hotel, I'm not sure what a two-star, three-star, four-star, star hotel in the Antelope Valley looks like, but that was kind of an interesting comment, I thought. I don't know if there's any information on that. I mean, looking at the building, it looks like it's about as nice as the one next door to it there, but I mean, I would have a concern if we're putting in a hotel that's really subpar for that area. But I don't know if there's any information on that either. It's, it's a vague question I have, I apologize for that, but I'm just kind of a little confused here.
Sure, yeah, so they have submitted some elevations, and they have some materials and, you know, they've included, you know, some onsite amenities, including a fitness center and guest laundry facilities. They've, you know, there's multiple building materials, and it is classified as an extended stay hotel with in-room kitchens and, you know, a lot of common, common space, so. And I, sorry, I will add, the, so the applicants are on the line too, and they could probably speak to their business operations if you'd like.
If that's okay with the chair.
Certainly.
I'd be curious to hear that.
Jordan, could you?
Yes, thank you. Yes, the finishes are, they are, it sounds like it's being made out as a two-star hotel. I would, I would not classify us as a two-star hotel. Our, it's, the, I mean, the website, you can, you can look at the Choice website. It's a national hotel brand, and our team has developed a number of these throughout the United States. And, you know, our, our guests, there's a lot of relocation guests that come. There's a lot of business travelers that come, as you mentioned, with the aerospace industry. So it really does provide a great place for travelers coming to the area who need a little bit longer stay and be able to kind of have a home base. But they also, you know, are, are there to support the local economy as well. And I think there was a comment that the transient guests wouldn't help the economy at all, but the employees that will be working there will be living in the community. We sure hope to be a good member of the community, of the business community, should we be allowed to move forward. Would very much, you know, like to be a good neighbor to the credit union and, and to the hotel next door. So, you know, clean, safe, and simple are what our founder, Jack DeBoer, out of Wichita, the brand started. It is now with the Choice brand hotels and clean, safe, and simple is, has been, has been the motto. And that is, that's what we, we go by. We're in the industry. You know, one of the leaders in cleanliness of rooms, safety of the hotel. That's, you know, that's what we, we stress, and it's going to be, you know, I think it's going to be a great place for people to stay in Palmdale.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hamilton. Okay.
I do have one question, if I could follow up. With respect to building the hotel, did you take into consideration the elevation or the height, the, in terms of how you're building the hotel, as well as other surrounding businesses in the area? In other words, I'm asking, did you think that you, when you built the hotel, that it might serve as a blockage for other businesses and their signs and their names and so forth?
Yes, so, good question. We actually have an exhibit, I don't know if the staff got a copy of that, but the, the existing line of sight to the, to the credit union and, and other businesses is, or at least to the credit union, is not affected by our site because of the way the hotel's positioned behind the existing hotel. Also, the, you know, the zoning does allow us to go up to 55 feet, and we are not, you know, we're, we're not maxing out our height. We're, we're going to be lower than the existing hotel that is there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hamilton. I would like to see if we can address Mr. McKinnon's concern on the parking spaces. If, was there, is there something on a legal aspect of that that could cause us an issue with this?
The conditions of approval for the credit union require a reciprocal access agreement and, uh, you know, working with adjacent property owners for, it doesn't expressly state on to West Avenue 08, but there is a requirement to allow reciprocal access.
Okay, so there was nothing specifically stating which?
On, in the conditions of approval-
In the conditions of approval for the-
Within West Avenue 08. However, there was a, you know, that was a required document that was reviewed by the divisions within the city.
Okay.
Would you like to add anything, Megan?
She kind of looked like she does. You're doing good though, Meg.
I was, I was letting her go. So, it is a standard condition of approval for adjacent property owners and developments to work together to provide onsite access where it makes sense. Because of the location of the existing driveways, there was no reasonable way to put a third driveway in the middle. So this development does need to use those two existing driveways, and the most reasonable location, with taking the fewest number of parking spaces, was through that, that northerly, sort of a little bit of an S curve that involves removing some of the parking spaces. It will not create an underparking situation for the, the bank use, and hopefully in the future, there will be reciprocal parking agreements in place so that all of the, all the patrons for all of these combined centers can park in any of those locations.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, no, because the public hearing is closed. I would like to address Mr. McKinnon's letter and the bank's concerns, because- I feel as if, if you were told something by the city and, and, um, verbal agreements can be, obviously whatever they are. Um, it is disheartening i- if now we're doing something differently. However, the use of a hotel in this area is completely acceptable. And the planning commission would have an awful lot of onus to find something wrong with this because it is, in my opinion, um, fulfilling all of the needs and requirements that, that we ask for a, uh, facility, a hotel in that area. So as much as I do feel for you, I do not see a legal or viable way for the commission to, uh, not allow this. I, I strongly agree with your concern about popping up hotels all over the place. That, that is a, a huge concern of mine as well. Because we do, if you're gonna have a lot of hotels, you're gonna need a lot more retail and, um, commercial assistance for them as well. But, um, I appreciate everything Edwards Federal Credit Union is doing. I was actively involved in the healing and honor field and I know you did so much for that and I do appreciate that. That was a phenomenal event. And planning, the planning department, if, if something is legal and approved, uh, um, within our, uh, municipal code, then there is not an awful lot. We can, we can suggest, we can guide, but we cannot mandate something happen or don't happen as long as it's legal, so. With that being said, any other comments on this item?
I ju- I would just have to echo which, uh, what, um, the commissioner said, my, the chair said. I, the, the letter that was written by Mr. McKinnon is strong, is compelling. Um, and I was looking to see if, at all possible, um, there was some kind of, um, I don't know, um, requirement that was not satisfied, but it appears that it does. I see the, the, the passion that you have and what you guys have done here and, uh, definitely appreciate you and support it. I think, you know, in reading your letter where it states, you said, it's, you said the city would support other retail businesses building on the remaining parcels. That to me, um, pretty much opens it up for the city to allow people to come in and, and build. And we may not like it, we may not be happy with the way in which they're building it. I heard you say about the color. Um, I'm kinda in agreement with you in terms of that. I, I don't like, uh, businesses or homes coming in and it just takes the color away from the, from the community. I don't know, I think what I saw, it seemed to be pretty good, but I certainly respect your opinion on that. Um, but I, I agree with the chair, um, that I don't see anything that's wrong with it. And so I would have to, um, support the staff's recommendation.
May I get a motion on this item?
Make a motion to adopt resolution number PC dash twenty twenty-two dash zero two-four, approving conditional use permit CUP twenty-two dash zero zero-three and site plan review SPR twenty-two dash zero zero-five and find that the project is categor- categorically exempt from environmental review.
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Frogasains and a second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? Then we'll call for the roll call vote, please.
Chair Nimeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Henderson absent. Thank you very much for being here this evening. If you were here for that item, we are not offended if you leave now. So you don't need to sit through the rest of the meeting. Item eight B has been continued, so that will move us on to item eight C.
Now here we go, this is my project.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This project is for conditional use permit eleven twelve, time extension number one. Bear with me while I relearn how to do this. There we go. The proposed project is a request for the continued operation of a previously approved major wireless telecommunications facility for a period of ten years. Located at four two one six six fortieth street east. And this is, uh, near the corner of fortieth street east and East Columbia Way, also known as Avenue M. The existing facility was originally approved on June seven, two thousand and one under CUP zero one dash zero seven for a period of ten years, which allowed for the construction of a major wireless telecommunications facility with a five hundred square foot ground-mounted equipment enclosure and a sixty-three foot, six-inch tall, uh, monopole. The entitlement subsequently expired and on September eighth, two thousand and eleven, CUP eleven twelve was approved by the planning commission for another period of ten years with an expiration date of September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. CUP eleven twelve was, uh, a request for the continued operation of the major wireless telecommunications facility as well as a request to allow a colocation of an additional carrier. The project has since gone through minor modifications, which included minor upgrades to antennas and the equipment. Pursuant to Palmdale Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen ninety-five forty E one, wireless facilities expire in ten years and an extension of the approval of the permit may be granted and new conditions of approval may be applied as deemed necessary. There are no physical alterations to the facility proposed at this time. An initial study was prepared for the project in conjunction with CUP eleven twelve. On September eighth, two thousand and eleven, the planning commission adopted a mitigated negative declaration, or M and D, finding that with incorporation of mitigation measures, the project would not have a significant impact on the environment. Staff has reviewed the M and D to determine whether the project triggered any of the conditions described in section one five one six two through one five one six four of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, which require the preparation of a subsequent supplemental or addendum to the M and D. As such, no further documentation is required and the previously adopted environmental document, uh, excuse me, environmental document adequately addresses the project. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number PC twenty twenty-two dash zero two-five, approving CUP eleven twelve TE number one and find that the project is consistent with the previously approved, oh, sorry, previously adopted M and D and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. This concludes staff's report and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dominguez. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff? Okay. Then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and you will have three minutes to speak. All right, Mr. Kous.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, my name is John Kous with Butler America Telecom. I'm authorized representative for Crown Castle International. Um, thank you for allowing me to participate by Zoom, uh, pretty far away. Um, uh, I don't have any, um, particular presentation or comments. We've been working well with staff for a number of months. We've worked well with staff for years and, um, we agree with all conditions of approval and I'm here for any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Is it still a co-located tower or is it strictly T-Mobile now? On that tower? That's just curiosity on my part.
It's just T-Mobile.
Okay, thank you.
But it is co-locatable.
It is co-locatable, but.
Yes.
Typically, you guys don't like to share in the mobile world, from what I'm learning.
No, if you want me to comment on that, I, I could.
No, that's okay. All right, is there anybody else here to speak on this item? All right, then if there is no objection, I will close the public hearing on this item. And may I?
Like to make a motion?
Yes.
Uh, move to adopt resolution PC twenty twenty-two dash zero two-five, approving CUP eleven dash zero one-two TE number one and find that the project is consistent with the previously adopted M and D and MMRPE.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner Frogasains. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then may we please get a roll call vote.
Chair Nimeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Henderson absent. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
That will bring us to item eight D. It's so nice that we have three different presenters today. I like it.
Ready? Good evening, planning commission. The project before you tonight is specific plan amendment twenty-one dash zero zero-one and this is submitted on behalf of the applicant, R Y Properties. The applicant has submitted a request to modify the land use designations, permitted uses and standards of development within the Rancho Vista specific plan. This specific plan is generally bounded by West Avenue N eight to the north, Fifty-Fifth Street to the west, California Aqueduct to the south and Thirty-first Street West to the east. Uh, I would like to note that there are no development, um, that is being proposed in conjunction with this application. The proposed project is a request to amend the specific plan as follows. Uh, it would change the land use designation from commercial to urban village residential on approximately eleven acres located, um, at the southwest corner of Rancho Vista Boulevard and Avenida Vista Verde. Change the land use designation from urban residential to urban village residential on approximately thirty-four acres located west of Rancho Vista Boulevard and Tilbury Drive. Modify the permitted uses within approximately ten acres of commercial property by allowing a high residential land use overlay on a vacant site located, um, on the northeast corner of Rancho Vista Boulevard and Town Center Drive. Modify the permitted uses within the urban medium residential and urban village residential designations. And lastly, clarifying development standards for the urban residential, urban village residential, high residential overlay and the golf course community designations. On this side, you will see the proposed specific plan land use. Uh, the proposed, um, specific plan amendment is compatible with the surrounding land use, um, uses and maintains the primarily residential and neighborhood commercial uses while allowing flexibility for future development. In addition, the specific plan amendment is designed to continually, um, continue orderly development while adhering to the guiding principles within the specific plan and the PMC. With that, the recommendation is to adopt resolution number PC twenty twenty-two dash zero two-two, recommending city council approval as specific plan amendment twenty-one dash zero zero-one and find that the project includes minor alterations to the previously certified E I R for the previously approved project as outlined within the M and, um, addendum. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alvarado. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? All right, then I will open up the public hearing on this item. And if you are here to speak on this item, please come forward. I do have a speaker slip here from Greg Kwan. And you are the applicant representing? And we did receive a letter from you, just letting you know.
Answer any questions you may have.
Very wonderful. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, I appreciate your letter regarding the Joshua Tree concern, which obviously our phone person was concerned with also. All right, is there anybody else in the room to speak on this item? Is there anyone in Zoom land to speak on this item? Or phone inland?
Uh, nobody at this time.
Okay. And then if there is no objection, we shall close the public hearing on this item and ask for a discussion or a motion.
I'll make another motion. To adopt resolution PC twenty twenty-two dash zero two-two, recommending city council approval of specific plan amendment twenty-one dash zero zero-one and find that the project includes minor alterations to the previously certified environmental impact report for the previously approved project as outlined within the addendum.
Now I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then can we please have a roll call vote?
Chair Nimeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Henderson absent. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening. And that will bring us to item nine, staff communications. Ms. Taggart?
Yes, thank you. Um, so you did receive a tentative agenda, uh, before the meeting and we have five items coming up for our July planning commission meeting. And just a reminder, um, that our meeting for July is going to be the third Thursday instead of the second Thursday. So it'll be on the twenty-first instead of the thirteen.
Okay.
That was all I had.
Wonderful. All right. Deputy Murphy, do you have anything to share with us?
This will be my last, uh, planning commission meeting.
Boo hoo.
All right.
Well, congratulations to you. So who will be here in your place?
Deputy Silva, you're in good hands.
Welcome.
Welcome Deputy Silva. Thank you.
Been a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy, uh, Murphy. You've been fantastic. So thank you. And that's it for staff communications. Any planning commission communications? All right, then if there are none, I shall adjourn this meeting to the third Thursday of July, July twenty-one at seven P.M. You are all free to go.